Okay, so if you need to say it, you definitely can figure it out. Okay, so we'll start. Stacy, you go down there? Okay, you're good? Okay. So we're gonna call the October 22nd, 2025 Special Meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order, and we're gonna start with the pledge. Anybody want to join us? It's over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I still do that at school?
Yeah, every morning.
Do you? As like morning announcements?
Yeah.
Oh, that's nice. Okay, so first off, Farah, thank you so much for coming in for the K-12 Building Committee. Just as a reminder to everyone, so you also know, we interviewed Bill Sternberg on September 10th. We, on August 13th, we interviewed Bryce Moynihan, Danny Oliverio, Katie Finland. On July 23rd, we interviewed Chris Johnson, Matthew Roche, Sam Magnello Sr., Deb Downey, Dan Carlin, and Seamus Moran. So great, there's a lot of interest in looking at your guys' school, in looking at the middle school and the high school, would be part of the K-12. So we'll hopefully be making a decision at our next meeting, which is our last meeting. So we'll see. So yeah, thank you, Farah. We'll ask you three questions, and then for everybody who's interviewing today, we don't hold it against you if you leave when you're done. And, but that's about it. So Farah, we'll start with you. Do you wanna ask a first question?
Sure. Evening, Farah. First question is, what is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the K-12 Building Committee?
So my understanding of this committee is, much like any committee, we're going to be working collaboratively with one another, the fellow board members, or committee members, I should say, to put together, in this instance, a facilities plan, the best plan we possibly can for, you know, the infrastructure for the schools moving forward. But we'd be working with stakeholders and outside experts, not just using our own brains, but, you know, that would be engineers, architects, folks from various departments in the town, and whoever else might have the appropriate insight and expertise to help put together the correct, best plan for our schools that are gonna be, you know, functional, have good form, and also be best for our budget for our town, kind of bring those all together in the best way possible, working collaboratively to bring that together and present it. That's my, that's my understanding of what we would be doing.
Thank you.
You want to go next?
Let me go next? Can you share any relevant experience you have serving on a committee, in a volunteer role, or through your professional background? And we're especially interested in learning about the unique skills, perspectives, or expertise you would contribute to the K-12 Building Committee.
Yeah, absolutely. So my very first, my very first committee I was on was the Plastic Bags and Straweth Ad Hoc Committee, which you all very graciously put me on, lo these many years ago. It was my introduction to kind of working with the town and the community. Since then, I've gone on to, I'm a director, board member with the State Independent Living Council. I am a member of the Connecticut Wheelchair Repair Council, which is a legislated council. So we work with senators and state reps, along with folks from the insurance industry and so on. I was, I am a member and was the chair of the Connecticut Wheelchair Reform Coalition. I have boards and commissions coming out of my ears, but on disability, I have time to volunteer, so I do, I love it. But the more, well, maybe not more relevant, additional relevant information is, obviously, as a disabled person who's spent a lot of time doing access work and education, working with local architects and engineers and designers here in town, and more broadly, being able to look at plans that are being put forward to make sure that they're not only ADA compliant, but going a step beyond the ADA to make sure that things are actually functionally accessible. Because, you know, our Americans with Disabilities Act was never supposed to be the end-all, be-all of accessibility, just a jumping-off point. So lots of experience working collaboratively across, across all sorts of, you know, lines, and access and equity is where I'm at.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, last question, and then if you have questions for us. If you are appointed to the K-12 Building Committee, what would you consider to be a successful outcome to your tenure on the committee?
Well, I think that for any and all of the folks on the committee, obviously putting together a successful plan for, you know, getting our schools either built or rebuilt, whatever the experts think, is the best plan for them. I am not an engineer, I do not get to make that decision myself. But finding the right path forward that's going to, again, have the best structural plan, the best financial plan, and create a good, safe place for our students and our educators that will be that for many years to come, so we have a good ROI on that. I think that's obviously like the whole committee's goal. For me personally, also making sure that, you know, it is really accessible, that it feels like a place that you can go into, and it doesn't feel like there's a barrier at any point. I was in our middle school the other day, it was pretty good. There were a couple small things I noticed, and I would love to be able to bring those sorts of things forward and, you know, continue to make things a little bit more barrier-free. My pleasure.
You have questions for us?
Um, I mean, not at this moment. I don't think I've done a lot of research.
Thank you. Benner, do you have a follow-up question?
Nope. Does anyone have to leave? So I just wanna say, in regard to all these committees and to everybody who's here and then been here, just a huge thank you, because especially for the students to know, it's, we have a lot of openings, and the town really functions thanks to volunteers that are on our 30-plus boards and commissions, and sometimes we don't have anyone who's applying, and this is like a very unique, amazing situation where I'd say for the Police Commission, K-12 Building, and Planning and Zoning, we have amazing candidates that have really come forward. So just a huge thank you to everyone, but I know you have to leave, so thank you very much. And like we said, hopefully November 12th, our last meeting, we'll be making the final decisions.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Farah.
If I may, last, last question, more of a comment. I have, of course, reached out, as I'm running for Board of Ed, I've reached out to the Chair of the Board of Ed and let him know that I would be interested in this appointment if I do get elected. And lastly, if not elected to this, or appointed to this position, no hard feelings. There's some incredible people who have applied, and I am so excited for whoever gets on here. And I do hope that if access issues do ever come up and there's any questions, this board, anyone on any committees in town, always feel free to reach out and just ask. If I can't answer them, I know so many amazing, clever people who can, so.
Thank you. You've been very helpful already, so thank you.
You're all wonderful, thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Farah, very much. Okay, next up, we will have Planning and Zoning. And Morgan, so you can stay there.
Stand, I can stand.
You can stand, or if you want, like you have one chair, you could like pull it right here, because I don't, it's really a joke.
We can play a chair.
Yeah.
It's okay, I can stand.
It's not that long, right?
Yeah. I'm gonna interview like 50 people.
You're like, this is a giant awkward interview to give back to the town, thank you for doing this. So same thing, questions are a little bit different because geared towards Planning and Zoning, but you kind of get the gist. And again, just to recap, on September 24th, we interviewed Carl Barty Jr., David Rizendez, who's currently an alternate, Lindsay Frank Fairchild, and then Hannah. We interviewed, and she unfortunately had to withdraw her application because she works in Ledgerd, and they have meetings the same nights. So just to give you full background. So Ben, do you wanna start?
Sure. Morgan, yes, this is Morgan. First question, what is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
So my opinion is that P&amp;Z is all about knowing and helping out how Stonington grows for the future. So it's all about the future, how it's gonna grow, but also maintaining a balance between the economic growth and keeping Stonington its coastal historic charm. So balancing both those, and the other issue I also see is like the housing needs. So economic housing needs and the historic charm, balancing those together and establishing a plan by going through these meetings, looking over proposals, being consistent and concise through decision-making, and being thoughtful within those decisions on how we see the future for this town.
Thanks. Sure. Please share any relevant experience you have serving on a committee, in a volunteer role, or through your professional background. We're especially interested in learning about unique skills, perspectives, or expertise you would contribute to the P&amp;Z.
Sure. So I have business acumen and community involvement, so I have my MBA. And I also served time as the Director of the Greater Mystic Chamber of Commerce for about two and a half years. So I have experience and dealt with communicating with the fellow business folks, all the shops downtown, the locals, and being involved within the community with events that arise. And I also am a local myself. I purchased my home, a small condo, in downtown about four years ago, so now I know what it's like to be a local, and also understand the businesses side point of view as well. So again, a balancing act between community, economic development, and balancing all of that. So that's my unique skills. Oh, can I add one more thing?
Of course.
And I am young, so I bring a young perspective as a local homeowner as well in the town. So I'm happy to be a voice for the younger generation and want to provide and welcome young people to come to meetings as such, to learn about planning and zoning, to get involved in your town.
Thank you. So similar to, same question I asked last year. If you are appointed to the Commission, what would you consider a successful outcome to your tenure?
If I was appointed, success would be to see this town grow in a positive way, again, maintaining its character and its charm. I will say, as a homeowner, when I purchased four years ago, I struggled with finding a home. I was outpriced immensely, and so if there's a way that we can look at affordable housing for people such as my age, I think that would be a huge outcome within my tenure. I do know with the planning and zoning, you guys have looked at the ADUs, and approved those, and watched it grow from like 30%, you guys went through the regulations and updated with this past June, July, to 50% of like the first floor plan, to having that in someone's home. But if we could look at, you know, maybe looking at other options or revising those limitations where ADUs could be more, you know, just like more common within the Stonington area, I think that would help out immensely, because that was, that was not easy. It was a battle.
Can you correct me anything else? Ben, you want to take last one?
Is that four?
Yeah.
As you know, the state of Connecticut now requires members of Planning and Zoning Commissions to complete four hours of training within one year of being seated, and then once per term. Are you prepared to fulfill that requirement?
Oh yeah, 100%.
Do you have questions for us?
I do not.
I got one last question that I have for everybody else.
Sure.
Morgan, what do you see as the most important issue facing Stonington over the next six years? And how could the Planning and Zoning Commission address it potentially?
I think in general, it's just managing the growth, the growth that comes in. So whether it be like, I mean, I could beat like a dead horse with this affordable housing. So like, affordable housing's a big one. But with that, you know, coming in with growth means coming in with like cars, like how do people get transported? Like, so just thinking the big picture, so that it helps us in the long run. So we're not just thinking six years, we're thinking 10, 20, 30, 40. So whoever sits on here has to think that way in the big mind.
Thanks.
Can I ask a quick question? So are you familiar with the time commitment for Planning and Zoning?
I think it's every other week this time, isn't it? No, it's like 5:30. And it could like, I know meetings last like anywhere between like half hours, like four hours, so.
Okay, yeah, so you know that it's, you know, reading up in the meetings, okay.
So I was a full-time MBA student, full-time working for the Chamber, so I like to stay busy, so.
Thank you.
Don't keep it busy.
Morgan, thank you so much, and again, you're welcome to stay, but we also don't hold it against you, busy people, so don't worry if you have to go.
Thank you so much. Have fun, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Morgan.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, so now we're gonna do Board of Police Commissioners. So we've got Brad and Nick, we'll just do them in the order that we got them. So Brad, do you wanna go next?
Sure.
Oh, it was like, oh, actually, you wanna be comfortable staying there? Sorry about this setup.
I understand the problem.
Okay. So three questions, very similar, but thank you very much for applying. Do you wanna start again, Ben?
Sure. What is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Board of Police Commissioners?
So my understanding of the primary functions of the Police Commission is general oversight of the Police Department. Obviously, the day-to-day operations responsibility for day-to-day operations is the chief. The Police Commission is, you know, general oversight of Police Department, hiring, promotion, personnel issues as well, as well as, you know, traffic signage requests, and general traffic enforcement, or not enforcement, but making sure that, you know, the community is being heard on traffic issues, and kind of a conduit between the community, the board, and the Police Department.
Please share any relevant experience you have serving on a committee, in a volunteer role, or through your professional background. We're especially interested in learning about unique skills, perspectives, or expertise you'd contribute to the Board of Police Commission.
Okay, so first of all, I'm a parent, and I'm a resident homeowner in the town. So my, as a parent, you know, my children are safe in this town, and I want them to continue to be safe and feel safe. As far as background goes, I was a prosecutor in Albany, New York for 10 years. I'm currently an attorney with DHS ICE. And I've had, so I've had almost 25, yeah, 25 years of interacting with law enforcement on a regular basis, as well as, in my role, my current role, I've done, I've been heavily involved in the hiring process in my current job, with respect to attorneys, not hiring law enforcement, not hiring police, but the hiring process in general, interviewing, recommendations, you know. So that process, I'm very comfortable with, and I have a lot of experience with that. With respect to, you know, general skills, I think that one of the biggest skills that is necessary for this position is listening. You have to be a good listener, because, and you have to be able to sit in that position, and you have the Police Department, who's talking, and you have to listen to them. Board of Selectmen, they're, they have concerns, and you have to be able to listen to them as well. Town residents, you have to be the conduit. So it's a very multifunctional position, but listening is the biggest skill that I bring to the table. Being able to listen and to communicate effectively with all these different groups. You're gonna communicate a little bit differently with the Board of Selectmen, you're gonna be, communicate a little bit differently with the Police Department, and a little bit differently with the community, the people from the town that come in and have concerns. And you have to be able to mesh that all together, listen, and then effectively communicate out to, you know, those people as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last question, if you're appointed to the Board of Police Commissioners, what would you consider to be a successful outcome to your tenure?
A successful outcome would be a professional, ethical Police Department. It would be effective communication between the townspeople and the Police Department. And, you know, specifically, one of the things that I'm interested in is social media, internet, and education. I attended a, the middle school had a, the officer, I forget the school officer's name.
Friend?
Yes, yeah. I was gonna say friendly, but. They, last spring, they had something at the middle school for the parents, just the parents in the room, and the stuff that he put up on the screen, we were all like, you gotta be kidding me, okay? And it's, we all know, and so that's a big priority, that's a big priority for me. I wanna increase those meetings, I want more of those meetings. I want more police interaction with educators and parents in the same room. The, as we all know, the internet is, social media and AI is growing by the hour, compounding. And it's, the things that we talked about last spring at that meeting at the middle school, they're all by the wayside. There's, there's something new, okay? And, you know, we just, there's something new coming out all the time. And I think it's so important for the parents to have that interaction with the police and with the educators in the same room on a regular basis. So that would be something that I would like to see as in my role.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
I do. So I attended a meeting, and I, how, what is the interaction or what is the chain of command relative to the Board of Selectmen and the Police Commission? Do we report on a monthly?
No, we should, you should do that. No, I'm kidding. So once we appoint, it's really official duties are kind of severed, so we appoint to all these boards, and all these boards are very independent then from our board. I will say though, with the Police Commission, where there's like a small caveat, is a point you touched on with residents, they'll reach out to, you know, sometimes all of us, sometimes they'll just call the First Selectmen's Office, but with traffic, safety concerns, different things. So then, we then share that back with, you know, the chief, or captain, or lieutenant, you know, to say, we have this issue, and then they'll often bring it to the Police Commission. So the communication, I'd say, is there, but in terms of any, like, legal authority or lines, once we appoint you, you're totally independent.
Yeah, I'm used to it.
Yeah, oh yeah, go ahead.
So I know you're talking about like addressing traffic, and like, just I know a lot of us are high schoolers, so a big problem is in the morning, the traffic going to the high school. I don't know if this is like a Board of Police Commission issue, or more of a Board of Ed issue, but would you have any like ideas to combat this? Between the middle school and the high school, that's a really good problem.
So I am acutely aware of that, because I take my daughter to the high school every night. I have one, two daughters, one goes on the bus to the middle school. And this is a new thing, because this is the first, or maybe the second year, that they've bused the middle schoolers at the same time.
Yeah, second year.
And so I am acutely aware of the traffic issues. You have to get, if you don't time it the right way, you're done, because you're lined up way past renames. So do I have any ideas how to deal with that? You know, I think it would be, you know, it would come down to either scheduling, or which, you know, maybe scheduling the buses, maybe staggering the starts, but then you have to deal with having middle schoolers and the high schoolers on the bus at the same time. How, you know, how are they gonna be able to make the start of their school day? It's a thorny issue, I think they're doing the best they can. This is the second year that they've had the middle schoolers and the high schoolers on the bus at the same time, and the middle school at West Line, this is the second year, right? So it's a thorny issue, and I think it's a work in progress.
And just to add to that, and that's a great response, I'll put you on the spot with that. Is, you, it's, you got a great question, because some of it is back to the Board of Ed and to your kind of administration to share if you feel this is, you know, a negative thing, and you guys kind of all agree, and you can address it at the Board of Ed in terms of like start times, more transportation options, things like that. But then, when it comes to like timing of the light, or trying to find alternate, you know, routes in and out, that would be the Police Commission, but working with the state, because Route 1's a state road. So it gets like levels of complication, where, but again, we're lucky, our Police Department has a great relationship with DOT and the state, so they can do that. So I would say collectively, if students are still very frustrated by this, you should, I'd say, start with the Board of Ed, but then you can pull in the Police Commission.
Could I ask one? What is the specific frustration that you're late all the time?
Not me, I just.
I know, really.
Is it that you're late, or is it that there's other?
I know like a big problem, a big problem with the school is like kids being tardy, like, that's like one of the things they wanna combat.
Yeah.
There was a pandemic right outside last week.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna answer it, that way they don't have to ask it twice. So frequenting numerous events there, my kids, you know, I have one in middle school, one in elementary school. But the biggest problem there is, I'm assuming you're talking Route 1 towards Westerly? I feel like coming over that hill. My idea going forward is that rather than going to the traffic light, you have a merging lane, where you come in between the factory and the high school, you have that giant parking lot, you also have that other private access, but where you merge in through that. And then that way, you're kind of coasting in, and the people that need to go straight can go straight, and, you know, the people that are coming from, you know, west, you know, excuse me, eastbound on Route 1, they just merge into the high school. There's plenty of spots that you could make it, where you could divide it up. But again, going back to what Deb said here, is that working with DOT is a delicate thing. They don't like to do projects necessarily sometimes, so, but that is probably, that's what I think is the best solution, you know, because I've been to high school games, I've been there, driving by to school. If you can find a way to merge in, that would alleviate so much traffic, you know, but.
If they did do something like that, would that work with buses as well? Because I know the buses get caught up in the really big traffic lanes.
Unfortunately, this is how politics work, and engineering and everything else. They would have to do a study, where they would have to say, hey, does this work best for buses? Does this work well for just, you know, more vehicle traffic? And they would do a study for a year, or six months, or whatever the DOT would require, to see what is the safest thing, the fastest thing, and the most effective thing, so. It wouldn't happen overnight, it would take time.
You have a great question, thank you.
Good question, yeah.
We don't wanna talk at our meetings. So we'll keep going, but feel free, Brad, if you have other things that you wanna ask or talk about. So thank you, Brad, so thank you. Do you have other questions for us?
No.
Okay, and again, welcome to stay, but you don't have to, we don't, we turn a blind eye. And then Nick, you're next, same exact question, maybe we'll mix it up. Do you wanna do the first one?
Sure.
Are they crazy? Trying to throw you off your game?
See if we can trip them up.
Yeah, she tries to trick me. All right, what's that? So, Tom, what's your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Board of Police Commission?
So the Board of Police Commission works hand-in-hand with the Police Department and also the residents of Stonington. They oversee, you know, the hiring, firing, any sort of discipline for officers. They work hand-in-hand on the, you know, they're the Traffic Safety Board, plus the Highway Signage Enforcement Committee, where they would review traffic lights, stoplights, road safety issues, such as this one that we just talked about. Also overseeing the large events in town. You know, I know that we host a lot of large events, you know, whether it's downtown Mystic, whether it's Westerly, but to make sure that those are permitted, the appropriate forms, that it's safely staffed, but also recognizing that we host these events that can affect a lot of the residents in town. So finding that delicate balance, where we have a safe event, staffed properly with our law enforcement, respecting the people that live in and around that event, for example, say Patrick State Parade, I'll use that, you know, to be respectful of that, but then while also maintaining the calls for service in town. So it's that triple balance that you wanna make sure. You know, you wanna work with the chief, the budget, oversee, you know, that things are being held accountable, because we all pay taxes in this town, we don't wanna see our taxes go skyrocketing because our budget's getting out of control. And just ensuring the overall function of the Police Department, you know, hand-in-hand, working with the chief, what do they need, how can we help them, how can they help us, and just accountability of that, please.
Thank you. Just gonna get to you next.
Yeah.
Please share any relevant experience you have serving on a committee, in a volunteer role, or through your professional background. We're especially interested in learning about the unique skills, perspectives, and expertise that you would contribute to the Board of Police Commissioners.
Sure. Currently in town, I'm on the Welcoming Schools Committee for Deansville School, where we establish initiatives to welcome in new families, newer students to the town. Professionally, I've been a state trooper for over 17 years. I currently oversee our Bureau of Special Investigations, provided to that. I was the lieutenant, the troop commander for Troop E-Motville, working hand-in-hand with the town of Stonington. I've sat on DOT committee meetings discussing wrong-way drivers and traffic safety. I've worked with our resident troopers and the First Selectmen in their respective towns for traffic concerns, whether that's speeding, you know, mostly speeding the DUI initiatives. I sit on panels for hiring of the state police, so regarding promotions to captain and lieutenant and sergeant, I've reviewed those. I've submitted discipline, again, going back to the hiring, you know, termination and the discipline of officers on this job. I've reviewed those before, submitting obvious violations of policy. I continue to work on various committees throughout the state, with the state police, sitting down with stakeholders and so forth regarding numerous issues throughout the state, whether that's violent crime and other topics that we won't go too far down. But, and again, that's just allowed me to gain knowledge about traffic safety, you know, whether that's on 95 or in your rural towns, you know, supervising eight to 10 towns, plus working in and around the area for the past 17 years. I think I bring excessive, you know, knowledge about. I think I bring excessive, you know, knowledge about police functions, accountability, operations and, you know, traffic safety.
And that, that's your current position with the, with the state police?
Which, uh, currently a captain with the state police overseeing special investigations. And I did gain approval from the Colonel that I could be appointed to this committee. If selected.
Last question. Uh, if you were appointed, what would you consider a successful outcome of your tenure?
I would consider a successful outcome, um, improving the overall police department and, and the town perspective of the police department, whether that's retention, hiring, um, holding the police department accountable. But then also, you know, bringing in good officers who reflect well on the town, reflect well on the personnel that are selecting them, reflecting well on the, the first selectmen or the first selectwoman, however this may end up. But also with all the events and traffic safety issues in town that we do host, making sure that those are corrected and that we have a safe tenure. You know, we, you know, we don't want to see any more unfortunate car crashes. We don't want to see, you know, issues at town events, especially parades, you know, Taste of Mystic, whatever, you know, or, or the duck race down to Pocket Duck, you know. We want to make sure those are all safe and that's through providing the appropriate resources to the PD, you know, communicating openly with town residents about their concerns about any events. But again, at the end of the day, just making sure everything we do is with safety in mind, accountability in mind, ensuring everything runs smoothly as a police department.
Thank you very much. So yeah, again, everybody's welcome to stay. You don't have to. And for students, there are some seats maybe open if you guys do want to sit or if you're comfortable where you are. So thank you both very, very much. Um, so now we'll go.
Do you have any questions for us?
Oh yeah, do you have questions for?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move on now to comments from the public. Does anybody have any comments?
Yeah.
Same, thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
And thank you for applying very much. Thank you. Any comments, any students? You guys were. Tell anything you want to share if you're trying here. You're like, don't want me on the spot. Okay, if no comments, then we'll move on to the approval of the meeting minutes from October eighth. Did I get a motion?
So moved, even though I wasn't there, I watched the video.
Uh, any discussion?
Can I just say?
Yeah.
I wish I was there because Fred Wagner. I mean, I really, I want to reach out and thank him. He just was so kind. So, um, yeah.
We had a resident who came, who this doesn't happen often, came and just shared like twenty minutes of really nice comments about how great the town is. Mostly the transfer station, how beautiful and amazing and wonderful the transfer station is. But he was very genuine and was very.
He was and, you know, we never.
Good stories.
We never see that. Good stories really just, you know, it's so nice when people come and do that and so.
And I'd say just a wooden plug for anybody who's ever interested in getting involved with the town. Like Fred's an example of somebody who just wanted to volunteer, got involved. And long story short, like he played such a big role in helping us buy the circus lot back from the town of Westerly for turning it into a public park. He helped us find small grant dollars to add it up. He just was like a champion. He'd, you know, advocate for it. And it was really, you know, just a volunteer in the community who really played a big role in hopefully giving us a brand new waterfront park that will come to fruition soon. So, but yeah, thanks for recognizing him. Anything else under comment, uh, uh, the minutes, comments under the minutes? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Stacy. Under correspondence, just to note that Lisa Paternos have been in application for the Commission on Aging and the Housing Authority. All right, so if you, we could have a discussion and again, no pressure if you don't feel ready to make a decision. But we'll start with the Board of Police Commissioners. So as a reminder, we have one seat and six applicants. I want to hear both of your thoughts. The only thing I'll say right now is that I was just really, it was amazing. We don't usually have many applicants and they were all really quality people. So just a huge thank you to everyone who did it. Um, so I don't know if one of you wants to start. Hard going away with one seat.
Yeah, I don't care. I mean, there is, just to mention it, while there is only one seat, there may be another seat that comes up next month. There probably will be, so. So there will be another opportunity, um, but because it'll be a different group of selectmen, it's not like we can, you know, do anything about that.
That won't, that won't be a full term.
True.
That would be.
That will be filling someone's term, yeah.
But, um, I, I mean, I, I, I do what I always do. I make a spreadsheet.
Data and analysis. Or you can use your spreadsheet.
Send this spreadsheet to make it for everything. But I, you know, there's a lot of things we look at. We look at, you know, what's a person's background, where they live in town? Because I believe that we should get, you know, a variety of people. You don't want a whole commission of people from Mystic or a whole commission of people from Pocket Duck. But then, you know, very important is kind of what they bring to the commission. And who's on the commission now? And so what new might come in? You know, if you have an entire commission of bankers, you have four people interview and three are bankers and one is an engineer. Unless there's another reason not to, I might lean towards putting the engineer on there. So, so those are the kind of things I'd look at. And, and while I do look at, you know, trying to balance males and females and party, I don't really consider that, that much. I would prefer to balance areas of town and expertise. And this was very difficult because wow, we had some really great applicants. And, um, you know, I kind of went back and forth between actually three with my top. But I, I think I probably would lean towards recommending Nick Tool. First of all, we haven't had anyone on there in several. Nicholas Tool? We haven't had anyone on there in several years who's actually had the police background and experience. Um, we have a number of people on there now who are in finance, business owners, um, and similar. And, you know, for that reason, I would probably have him as my first choice. But I, I honestly, it's very difficult because I, there's a couple of other ones that I really, um, really liked as well, so.
Do you mind sharing, like if there was another like close contender or top? Or do you want to just stick with the top and then let that go?
It would, probably my next one might be, um, Steven Small and then maybe Amy Nicholas. Those would be my top three, so. You know, and again, looking at what they're bringing, you know, kind of a different perspective. Um, Mr. Small who's here, is a retired educator, you know, with some background, you know, ways back in police. Amy Nicholas has the borough public safety, although, you know, given kind of, she also works in finance and we've already got several finance people on there, that's why I had kind of moved that around. But, um, I was also looking at where they live. Nicholas Tool lives, you know, north, the north part of Stonington. We really don't have anybody up there. You know, we have a lot from Mystic and Pocket Duck, so, so that was my rationale.
Okay, thank you. Your spreadsheet's available. Ben, Larry, your thoughts?
So my first choice again, uh, would be John Mershon. He, he applied last year and he's back, back again, um, reapplying this year. Temperament means a lot to me for, for all of these boards, but particularly on the Board of Police Commissioners. And I've known John for probably twenty-five years since we served together on the zoning board of appeals. And, um, he brings that experience, a land use experience, which is increasingly, I'm, I'm seeing, going to all the Board of Police Commission meetings, I'm seeing increasing overlap between land use and, and traffic and public safety and so forth. So I think the land use experience is important. And also, uh, ten years on Mystic Fire District Executive Board, um, as chairman as well. He's got the experience with, with, uh, public safety. So I support him in also the geography, coming from downtown Mystic. We do have, we do have representation from Mystic, but not really, Mystic's a big area and John, John is outside of the, the area that. The others are from, um, but I guess, uh, to go further, my second choice also would be Mr. Small. I like his background. He, you know, he's got, got experience that, that's related to law enforcement, but not currently employed in law enforcement. And, you know, I think that, I think that the, we have staff representation in Jay and Todd and Brian that bring, bring the expertise that we need from, from the actual police. And I, you know, I feel strongly that we need outside people, people that are outside of that field to oversee it. So, um, so I wouldn't be in favor of Mr. Tool. Uh, I, I do like Mr. Small's comments, particularly, uh, in his application. He said he has, has a keen interest in equity and fairness for the public safety personnel as well as the people they serve. And he was the only, only one that really mentioned the people they serve, so he's got my vote.
And if I can ask maybe if you don't have one, but do you have a third?
No, I, you know, I, um, certainly Amy is, is qualified and, and someone I, I see at every Board of Police Commissioners meeting. So, um, she's certainly got the experience and the, and the understanding of how they operate. So I could, I could certainly support her.
I know, but thank you. Both had very thoughtful comments. I guess, um, and again, like I said, if we need more time, we need more time, um, to sit on it. I think though, somewhat similar, so I mean, to me, the only other person, I do think, I agree with you on the, um, I agree with you on Nick, I agree with both of you on Steven, um, I'll talk more about Amy. I also do think, um, Bradley, you know, has a very interesting background and I liked his balance about parents and I liked his forward looking area where the police could focus. I thought that was something really great, that kind of, um, you know, those kind of community initiatives that the Police Commission can and I think should take on. I also thinking about Debbie, like I, I do think law enforcement, one person, again, not a bunch, but I think one that's on the board who's overseeing them could be a helpful internal perspective. But then I liked how Brad was more legal side of things. So him and Nick, I thought had some interesting traits, um, that were just, you know, worth noting. But I guess for me, my top one, thinking about who were, who were, who were replacing was Amy, just since we're replacing Lisa, who was, um, kind of our borough person. And then just that we don't have anyone from the borough on there, Amy being the emergency management person for the borough. She has attended a lot of townwide stuff in addition to all the Police Commission meetings. She's, every meeting, including ones at Amtrak that have gotten very heated, she's proven to be very level headed and even keeled. And, um, I do agree with you, Ben, I think temperament is actually on this board in particular is maybe one of the most important. And I do like how, um, I think a few people mentioned it, but like listening is I think one of the most key traits that we need on this board. So, um, I do think she would do that well. But I don't know, I also really, um, Steven like a lot because we were also saying like, there's also so many other boards. I could, he would love to have people on. So I don't know, I'm very torn. I mean, I think Amy is probably for me, number one. Nick is probably my number two and Steven's my number three and then Bradley's a very close fourth. So I don't know if we want to hash this out a little more tonight and see if we can figure it out.
I think we should. I'd like to.
Yeah, I mean.
And I'm not totally, like I can be persuaded or.
I mean, I, as I said, I could be persuaded. I mean, my second and thirds are Steven and Amy and I, all mine are so close that I could, I could easily be persuaded for either Steven or Amy, you know, and fine with either.
I think, so it's like, we both like Nick there, aren't you? But you don't at all. So like maybe just to be fair, we'll take him out of, I mean, are you, but he was your number one, so I don't want to.
I mean, it was very, very difficult, so I'm willing to be, you know, I mean, mine were so close together. It wasn't like it was one, two, three. It was more like it was one, two, three meshed in and, um, so I, no, I'm fine with. I thought about the same thing about Amy, how we're replacing someone from the borough. And, you know, maybe it makes sense to have the borough, you know, which I did have notes on here as well, but.
Like, and she just attended so many meetings.
I mean, that's important as well. But I'm, as I said, I'm, you know, I'd be happy with any of the three that I identified.
I, well, I'll, I'll take a chance. I'll nominate, uh, Steven Small.
Do you want to present those some more points about maybe Steven versus Amy? Like what?
I guess, I mean, I'd like to give someone that's new a chance. I, I, I value experience and the fact that particularly with Amy, she's on another board. She, I mean, she's representing the borough for public safety. I think that's, I think that's valuable. I, no, I really, I really can't provide anymore. I mean, I'd like to give somebody else a chance too.
I guess where I'm just torn is like, like I do agree, like I think it's great and it's, oh, we always want more people to join boards and commissions and to get involved. But this one, I think historically, it's always, we've almost predominantly appointed people who have served on other boards or commissions or have had experience. Like this is a regulatory board with a lot of, you know, obviously a community, you know, facing. There's just a lot of complications to this board. So I think the idea of having someone who's used just serving on other boards is actually a plus in this instance, which I wouldn't say for every board it is. But I don't know, but I also loved Steven's background. Sorry, it's so awkward talking about you as if you're not in the room, but.
You didn't wish you left.
Because the background really was, I think, spot on and like skill set wise.
So, so my question would be, and I don't know the answer to this, and maybe you too. I mean, is there a real advantage to having somebody that's a burgess of the borough on the Police Commission? I mean, will that tie in? You know, the borough has their own.
And she, she does periodically report to them on, and back and forth, of course, because she has to report to the, to the burgesses too. But she periodically reports to the Police Commission on requests for things in the borough, for events and so forth, but also just on, uh, traffic issues that are going on. So there already is that, that, um, aspect to her involvement. They're both strong.
Mystic, Mystic?
Mystic, Old Mystic.
Mystic, Old Mystic, yeah.
That's right. You're on River, River Bend?
Near me.
Okay, so a little bit, alright.
Yeah.
So yeah, outside of the.
So it isn't somebody that's right in Mystic, which we have a lot of, or I do in Mystic, I think, so.
Yeah, Mr. Sherman was pretty close to downtown.
Yeah.
I'm gonna let Debbie, you go with what? And then I'll.
Can we just interrupt for a second? A lot of us have to go.
Okay.
Can we just, we just need somebody to sign our papers for us, though.
Yeah.
I need to know what your motion is, so I'm happy to help everybody, but can you please, someone?
Right down the motion, yeah. You guys are leaving in a critical joke show, like a clip here.
You may rail, make them stay till eight? No, I was really, the, the reason that I, um, nominated, I took a flyer.
And we're recording this for the public, so yeah.
The, the reason I took a flyer and, and voiced nomination for, for Mr. Small was I was really trying to tabulate what, what the order of our picks was. That seemed to be the proper, proper pick. But I, I think that what's being reflected in the discussion is that, um, two, number two and number three are, are very close for all of us. So, um, you know, I'm good either way. I still, I would stand by the nomination. It's just not.
And I'm good either way. I'm good either way with the, and I don't know, you know. It's hard because, you know, they're different, they live in different places, different backgrounds. Both bring different, you know, skill sets, which are, you know, the great.
But I think, I think we're close enough that we should look for unanimity. So if, you know, if we need to, if we need to change the motion or not.
No, I think, um, I'm just trying to think about the Debbie's, uh, thing, her rubric, um, we talked about. No, I think it is really close. Like, I'm just trying to think, like, um, you, the, I think it's, to your point, Ben, maybe like, I was worried about the borough not being represented and thinking about it as having someone come and be a permanent kind of member is good. But you bring up a good point that like, if she's still willing to come and do that in her role as emergency manager. So like, maybe it's still an added benefit that we get without actually having her on there. Yeah.
Yeah, and it's terrible to say about.
Part of me feels bad because then it's like we're not letting her have a voice or say and, and she's been participating so much. But at the same time, um, well, if she might still be willing to do.
Yeah. That's kind of exactly what I was thinking when I asked that question.
And there will be another opportunity, as, as you said.
Could be, we don't know for sure.
You're right, we don't know for sure, but there's, there could be another.
There could be another opportunity, yeah. Okay, I'm, I'm good. Do you want to remake your motion?
I move to appoint Steven Small to the Board of Police Commissioners.
A second.
All right, all those in favor?
Alright.
Hi, why don't you carry it? Stephen, thank you. Hope you don't regret it, no kidding.
It's interesting to watch the process.
We try to be as transparent as possible.
If only those other guys had stuck around.
Yeah, really, yeah. Could have just had a thumb war note. Um, thank you very much though, for being willing to do this and, um, we appreciate it, so thank you. Some years we have like, one person that applies, so this is amazing.
Yeah, I know, and it's hard. We don't usually have, you know, for me, usually it's like, oh no, this is it, you know, but.
Yeah, it's amazing array of candidates.
Yeah, and very different backgrounds and skill sets, um, but thank you, so congratulations. Alright, let's see if we can get to the same agree with planning zoning. Okay, wait, do we say all, we said all those in favor, I guess, okay, motion carries. So we made a motion to appoint Stephen Small to the police commission and it was unanimous. He's like, what?
Unanimous.
And just to note, Lisa Tepper Bates' term on the Board of Police Commissioners will end on October 31st. We thank her for her service to the commission, so thank you. Um, okay, so now, um, and just so the students know, every year it rotates, so every year there's an opening on the police commission. Uh, okay, planning and zoning, we have one regular member seat and, and one alternate seat member with four applicants. Um, but I wanted to clarify, because, sorry, we actually, yes, okay, yes. We could potentially, depending on what happens, have two alternates. Um, so just, again, recap, Carl Bart, I know I can't say that, Carl Barty Jr., David Rizendez, uh, Lindsay Price Fairchild and Morgan Yandow, thoughts? Uh, do you want to start this time or you want to start again?
Sure. I would, I would move to nominate David Rizendez, who's current alternate member. He's, uh, I think now particularly with the, with the situation with the planning department and not to mention, um, just all that's going on with the rewrite and the P O C D and all that. Again, experience, someone that's a seated member, uh, he shows up, he's been good, up top to the chairman, chairman's happy with him. Um, and, uh, and also his own enforcement, uh, Z B A experience before that for like, 12 years at least. Uh, so Dave is my pick.
Alright, so let's do that one first.
Yeah, he was going to be my pick to move up as well, so.
Same, okay, don't get us so green on the talk. This doesn't always happen, guys. Um, alright, so can I get a motion to appoint David Rizendez as a regular member of the planning zoning committee?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Thank him for his service, ongoing service, alright, all those in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. Okay, so now that we moved David up, we actually have two alternates. Should have flipped ahead in my notes. Um, so, okay, so we have three people to consider, so again, Debbie or Ben, who wants to start?
You want to go first?
Look at me, I will, I'm, I'm prepared to.
Okay.
I would, my choice would be Lindsay, um, and I'll deviate from what I said for the last commission. I think with, again, with planning and zoning, it's so important and the experience is, is important. Um, also, commitment should be rewarded and I think that Lindsay's kind of worked her way up to this with all the other work that she's done on, on boards and commissions in town. You know, other than just her, her general qualifications and her background, I think that, you know, her work with the, uh, Climate Change Task Force and Waterfront Commission, um, I just believe that she's ready. I think, I think planning and zoning is one of the more important commissions that we have in town. I think she's ready for it, so I'd like to see her.
And if we have two, do you have a second?
If we have two.
Well, we do have two.
We do have two.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hadn't really thought of that yet, but I, uh, I'd be happy with either Carl or Morgan.
Okay, Debbie, your thoughts?
Okay, so, um, I was hoping we'd have two because I think both Morgan and Lindsay would be, would be my choices. I mean, I think, you know, Lindsay certainly, and, um, she had a very good interview, she had a lot of information to share. Um, and I think, but I think Morgan brings also a different perspective and I think having the two of them is kind of an interesting balance and both as, as alternates. So I, you know, agree with Lindsay, but I would also, um, Morgan would be my choice for the second one, so.
Um, I feel like we're just housing on the poor borough. Um, so my only concern again is we have two people now from Mystic.
Yeah.
Um.
Where's Carl?
Carl's the borough.
Oh, he is.
So I'm laughing, just like, we can be like, forget you borough, uh, we're on your own. Um, I think he seemed.
But.
Yeah.
Like, it's a resident, yeah, it's, it's just, it's unusual to have someone from the borough applying a zoning because they have their own.
Their own planning zoning, yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Just new to me, that's all, but, you know, there's no reason it can't be.
So, yeah, just, and, um, you know, business owner, you know, you mentioned having experience on the other end of the table, which I think is always useful, but, um, I do think, I've, I've worked with Lindsay on a lot of things, um, committee-wise, including the P O C D implementation committee, which she was really a great voice on and very open to hearing people's different perspectives and thoughts and, um, and once Ben mentioned. And then Morgan, I really don't know, but, um, she gave, I thought, a great interview tonight. Um, I liked her kind of energy and that she seems like she really wants to get younger people involved and get, um, people kind of motivated and obviously having worked at the chamber, but then also living in Mystic, to your point, like, you feel some of the pains that come with, uh, some of the things that happen. Um, and I obviously would love that she recognized that we're having a housing challenge and that we need some creative solutions here, so people.
I meant to mention that one, that's very important.
So hopefully you guys one day, if you want to live here, can.
Yeah.
And that was also Dave's, uh, number one.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and she, and she's got, you know, her current position, if you read, you know, she is kind of a land manager for the Mashin Tuckets. And so she's got, you know, that interesting background too. I think that with the chamber, and I think, as I said, I was serious when I said it's a good balance with Lindsay. You know, the, having the two of them with kind of different backgrounds, both young and, um.
Different environment, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the only thing we need to do is to differentiate between the two alternate positions because one is a full year and one is the remainder of the year, so.
Yeah.
So I would, again, um, if I can make a motion, I would move to appoint Lindsay for the full term and Morgan for the second.
I just wish we'd asked them.
Yeah.
I would support that with the caveat that I want to be able to ask them and if they have a different preference, that we could, yeah, discuss it. I'm, I'm sure they'll be happy, but just in case they're not, like, Lindsay's like, no, I don't want that for some reason. I mean, usually we check with them, right? We don't usually.
I mean, sorry, but, I mean, you're, you're filling out David's seat, but next year, whomever that person is would just request reappointment. I mean, so it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, it's not guaranteed.
And, no, it's not, but like, how often has someone?
Would never move.
But not in any time that I've seen, I get what you're saying, but, um.
Alright, so it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, doesn't matter.
I don't think it's a big.
Doesn't matter to me, so.
So why don't we just, um, make a motion to appoint both Lindsay and Morgan to the two alternates, to the planning zoning commission and Ben, if you want, we can amend it. I don't even know how I'd work that though, I would probably just.
Well, I don't know how they, how it's allotted otherwise, that's all, that's the only thing. I mean, Stacy would just choose, but I think that we should choose, so, so I would, um.
Were they both, um, are there, are they both Dems, both Morgan and Lindsay?
No.
Well, so David Spa is a Dem.
Okay, so that's where, so, yeah.
So you'd fill David's spot if you, if you want to look at it that way.
That's true.
We don't usually look at it that way.
Yeah.
And just.
Yeah, however you normally do it is fine.
Normally it's one, you know, normally we're not doing three spots at once, so.
I think we should just say, can we get a motion to appoint Lindsay Price Fairchild and Morgan Yandow as alternate members of the planning zoning commission, noting Ben's request that, um, Lindsay would take David's spot and.
No, it was the other way around, that Lindsay take the full, but David's spot is the remainder of his term.
Okay.
So.
But that obviously, Stacy's saying that was the opposite, that we would normally fill a D with a D or a U, not an R.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Can I ask a question about this?
What?
Is, is one person a Dem and one person a R?
Yeah.
Okay, I believe the chart says you can only replace a Dem, somebody from a party with a member of that party or an unaffiliated.
Perfect, thank you. So just to be safe, we'll do that.
We'll just do that.
We're going to replace David's seat with Lindsay and the vacancy with Morgan.
So moved.
To be sure, being safe, thank you.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carries. Thank you. Alright, now we should, I'm so sorry, Chris. If it was a special meeting, we could have bumped you up, but, I know, I'm just apologizing because we're still not there. If it was a special meeting, we could have bumped you up, but we can't legally. Um, so just to note resignation, um, Paul Geis is resigning from the Cultural District Commission effective October 31st. We thank him for his service. He, um, really helped get this new commission up and running and barrel of energy and we really thank him for that. Um, okay, award of bid, little water project at Green Haven Renee Road at our esteemed town engineers, that's how we've been working over, whatever, 14-hour day already, so thank you.
Been in the process, maybe eight years, so an extra eight minutes, you know, no problem at all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chris.
Eight minutes.
Town engineer, what's that?
Is it going to take eight minutes?
Chris has got a whole speech, he ought to go. Lasers, light show.
Are we all ready to do it last meeting?
Do you want to give the overview, this wonderful project?
Yes, um, I'm here, I prepared a memo, uh, for outlining the request for award of Green Haven Water Loop to Mizzie Construction, uh, for, in the amount of $1,342,590. Uh, the town of Stonetown received five bids, uh, it was invitation to bid 2025001, water distribution line extension project, and that was in September 18th, 2025. This construction project includes installation of approximately 2,900 linear feet of eight-inch ductile iron pipe. And where this is, so for a million dollars, you do get a plan, I could show you if you wanted to see a graph. Uh, I think it's worthwhile, but just real quick.
It's burned in my brain.
Yeah, I know, I looked at this quite a while, but this is just an outline of Green Haven Road. If you imagine, this is north looking up and you have Route 1 here, Mechanic Street here. Currently, we have what's called two dead-end water lines. So originally in 2016, uh, I believe it was the fire chief came forth and under the impetus of fire safety, they asked if we could complete the loop. And what that would do is, uh, a couple of things. Number one, if they were to be fighting a fire in the center of town, Route 1, and that pipe collapsed, now with the loop, we could pull water down Mechanic Street and, and backfeed the water, so that was important.
So this impacts, this impacts the high school, so like, you guys are in the crux of this disaster zone.
Yeah.
Sensitive areas. And, uh, so again, the impetus for this was to complete the loop for redundancy. And number two, also to improve the fire pressure flows, the gallons per minute, uh, and the pressure. And, uh, so we were successful and we have, uh, and if I just briefly went through, you know, the timeline, this started before myself, perhaps before the first, maybe many of us here that are, sit on this board, but it truly is a success story. So the Parkhead Fire Department notified town officials of the concern of redundancy 2016. Real quickly, 2017, town of Stonetown leaders commissioned C N E engineering, uh, which is the modeling engineer for the water for the town of Westerly, because this water, the custodian of the water is actually the town of Westerly, which is real interesting. Uh, and that leads up to, in 2018, the director of planning develops a report outlining various, uh, water scenarios in which we could accomplish this task. Uh, early in my career here in 2020, uh, the first select woman, uh, we, we met as we were, you were pursuing grants with our grants department, before, I think before we had a grants department. And I told the chief, you had me at, hello, you know, this is something that really needed to be done. It was largely the efforts of the first select woman's office to secure that grant. It was a HUD grant, and I want to note that HUD grant is for a total of $1,952,130. So the good news is, uh, that's enough of funding, uh, not only for the project, but the engineering. So immediately we went into engineering, we had a work in cooperation with Westerly because the idea is that they being the custodian will have to approve the plans, uh, share the inspection and ultimately accept this water line, uh, for the benefit of, of the stakeholders, which is town of Stonetown. And, uh, so getting back to the monies, we currently, under this recommendation for award, would have enough money for the construction, the engineering, a contingency and still have a little bit of a buffer, and I want to note that. Um, and that's, that's why we're here this evening. In addition to the recommendation, of course, our consultants, uh, recommends the contractor, uh, check their references. They've actually done work for Stonetown, they've done similar jobs. I myself reached out to, uh, Westerly and talked to their, uh, director in the water department, which, uh, has worked with, uh, Mizzie Construction. So, uh, just to reiterate, that is eight years or so, an effort that culminates hopefully this evening and, and we are, I am recommending the award of $1,342,590 for the, uh, board's consideration of award.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Before, I just want to say a huge thank you to Chris because this is another example of projects that happen in the town that it'd be very easy just to say, nope, brought too much on my plate, and it'd be totally fair. And Chris did not give up and he worked right alongside me. And we also, again, had another volunteer in the community who just happened to have a background in this and worked tirelessly with Chris to help augment, um, our, you know, kind of outreach, outreach to the state, outreach to different grant funders, finally narrowed in on the HUD, had to do all this work. Debbie stepped in, she helped with environmental review that would have cost us tons of thousands of dollars. Um, and just, I mean, it took a lot of people not giving up and continuously. And then even once it was awarded, there was a lot of issues and trying to get through that and different government shutdowns, restarts, you know, layoffs, so it's been very challenging, but we're here, we didn't give up and hopefully it'll really benefit, because again, like Chris said, this could have impacted all the different senior housing facilities, the high school, not just for you guys, but it's our emergency op, uh, shelter, should anything happen. Um, it, you know, it really impacted a lot of people.
Police Department, Human Services.
Even took some of the transfer station too, so it was a lot, so, yeah, police station. Um, so, but a huge thank you to Chris, because you could have ended this before we even started, when you came on board. You could have said, I have too much with bridges, there's no way I'm taking on a water line, so thank you very much. Um, do you guys have questions? I know we kind of went over this a little bit at our last meeting.
No.
No, no, I'm excited.
Yeah.
Just waiting for the SAM.
Yeah, SAM registration came through, um, and I'm, I'm glad we gave them more time, so. Alright, anything else? Can I get a motion to award the bid for the waterline project at Green Haven and Renee Road to Mizzie Construction in the amount of $1,342,590?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Get some sleep.
This is so certain.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Um, perseverance is a life lesson for all of the students, don't give up, just keep pivoting. Um, okay, last, one of the almost last thing, use of the town dock. Um, as you know, we received a request from the Ocean Community Chamber of Commerce for use of the grassy area at the town dock for the lobster trap tree, the annual tradition. Um, Debbie, I think you watched it, but we discussed it at our last meeting, resulted in a split vote. Ben was, wanted to wait for the waterfront commission, I wanted to move ahead, um, uh. Ben, I think you know the waterfront commission's actually meeting tonight. I don't feel like it, I still feel like we need to vote on this and move it with the contingency that the waterfront commission also has to move it. I will add, just to say, um, Ben, just before we leave, to address some of your concerns, we have reached out to the police department. I think as we talked about, we were hopeful that we'd get a system that would streamline event management because it's a nightmare for everyone involved, um, it was too expensive. So we're back to just looking at trying to improve the actual documentation and to improve the communication where when the P D approves, like, this is the example, a long time ago, immediately they should be getting verbal in the minutes and a follow-up from their side to say, hey, this happens to be, you know, needing town, board of selectmen and waterfront commission approval. So it happens immediately, because what we find happens a lot of times is all these nonprofits get busy and they're like, oh, we got our big approval, and they completely forget about it and it's not quite to the level, I think, of communication that would benefit. Take Stacy chasing them down and getting them and then getting here, um, and we know everybody's busy and just trying to do good community events. So we are trying to have a better process in place where they can be reminded, but again, not to say, you know, one commission, you know, they approve a contingent on us, I think we should approve it to a contingent on the waterfront commission. But, um, do you guys want to talk about anything else before?
I, I'm good with doing that and we've done that in the past. And it isn't like this is the first year for this and it isn't like somebody last year, waterfront or another commission came up with a suggestion that they, they should be doing this or they should be changing this or anything like that. Um, so I'm happy to approve a contingent on waterfront commission approval.
Ben, anything else?
Yeah, I'm, um, it's, uh, it's still just about the process and I know that you've got, you've got votes, so I'll just stay out of it.
Well, I mean, just to point out, like, if we waited to our next meeting, it would already be over, like, maybe at, or November 10th, yeah.
It should go to waterfront commission sooner. It went to, um, the police commission quite a while. the police commission quite a while ago.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if, I think it's probably up to the applicant to know where they have to go.
They just get busy and they're overwhelmed and understand.
I understand, but.
But that's why, again, we'll put that recommendation forward to the PD side and the police commission side, though. We're just gonna be a something you'll champion, um, to, uh, to try and just enhance the communication to the smaller nonprofits and not leave it all on them and leave it on Stacy to have to track everybody down.
And actually, um, I think ideally it would go to waterfront commission before it went to, uh, police commission.
I don't think that would be possible, cause the police commission will put in stipulations. I think the waterfront commission will wanna reflect on, like, they could say, oh, we're gonna block off this parking, and then they're like, no, wait, that impacts the fisherman or that. So I think they wanna see the whole plan.
It's a good point. I know in Mystic, um, with the Mystic River Park, with events that, that impact the park, uh, the chief, when he came on, made it a point that, uh, before it came to the board of police commissioners, it had to get approval from, from the park commission, which just made it easy.
Yeah.
Perhaps, perhaps it can happen that way here.
Um.
Anyway, I'll, I'll, I'll abstain against it.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the use of the town dock grassy area by the Ocean Community Chamber of Commerce from November tenth, twenty twenty-five to January fifth, twenty twenty-six, for the lobster trap tree, uh, contingent on the waterfront commission approval?
So moved.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Alright, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
I, uh, opposed, abstaining.
Staying.
Uh, the motion carries. Alright, hopefully one, oh, we still have a couple more things, we'll be back. Um, so, uh, it's just that time of year where we're, we're supposed to formally establish the twenty twenty-six meeting schedule, so it can be filed with the town clerk and the secretary of state's office. Um, of course, the incoming board of selectmen may choose to adjust the meeting times or dates once they begin convening. Um, but I think we should do this now to ensure that they have a schedule and it's set for the start of the year, and also they don't have to start with a special meeting, which is always a little bit awkward and harder to, especially for your first meeting. Um, so do I hear a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six meeting schedule of the second and fourth Wednesday of the month at the Stonington Police Department at five thirty?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope, I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, they can change it if they want to, but, good luck finding a time.
Yeah.
Um, alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, street number, favorite, this number that, sorry, the request is that street number for map one fourteen, block one, lot one B, become seven forty-four Al Harvey Road, Stonington, Connecticut, zero six three seven eight. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carries, right, last one. New street number assignment, map one thirty-three, block six, lot one, become two ninety-three, Miss Tuxa, Avastown, Connecticut, zero six three seven eight.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I motion carries. Thank you. Alright, last thing, comments? Second to last thing, Debbie?
If you have any, go ahead.
No, I just have one, um, I was looking, hopefully to get an update on, uh, Clifton's.
Yes.
Uh, retirement and replacement and, um, and more importantly, interim.
Yeah, I can give a big HR update, um, in a minute. Anything else?
No, that's really.
Anything for you?
Um, no, the only thing I was gonna say is, um, I did approve that, um, annual report for the boathouse park that will go to the state.
Thank you.
It's something that has to be done under the voluntary remediation program.
You guys have been driven by the boathouse park in your dick, it's like coming along, the, the actual boathouse is physically being constructed, and that's another painful, more than a decade project, but it'd be totally worth it at the end. And thank you, Debbie, so much for all your work on that. We would not be here without you. Um.
I think that's it, that's all I have.
Okay, yeah, no, I know we ran kinda long, so I'll be brief, just mostly, we've had a number of people leaving the town. Uh, and just happens to us, um, so we have a lot of roles to fill. But so, just to share, one is that we had some really great interviews today, actually, for the new director of administrative services. I think we'll be doing a second round next week, and then hopefully making a decision, but like, in so many other areas of municipal government, we are very short and down people, and there's really no pipeline, and a lot of towns are really struggling. So if anybody wants to go into fields like public works or planning or.
Engineering.
Engineering, you know, if there's a shortage assessment, um, there's a shortage of jobs and you could come out making a good bit of money. Um, but with that said, we had like amazing candidates. Um, so that's really good news. I feel pretty good about that. The less, the more challenging one, I think you guys know, we had the director of land use position out, um, we're gonna be putting that back out. We'll be looking at, probably going back to the board of finance to, uh, just give you a, give a heads up that we're gonna need to repost that at a slightly higher amount. Again, looking at other towns, a lot of other positions out, we were extremely low. Um, so we'll just see. Again, not to say we'll get somebody with a higher amount, but we will put it back out. In the meantime, our town planner, um, did give their, his notice, so he, um, leaves October thirtieth. And, um, he's been doing a good job trying to get things going and up to speed. We signed an agreement yesterday with Tai, Tai Chi, I'm gonna say their own, um, basically to bring, like we did last time with, um, when Keith left, to bring in like a planner, um, to help.
Cog.
Yeah, so this is cog supported, but the cog didn't necessarily have their own, there are too many people loaned out, but this is, uh, as I understand it, it's basically, it's a support mechanism between the cog and Tai Chi, if I'm saying their name right, um, and the cog is actually paying a huge part of it, because this person also partially kind of works for the cog, I guess, or will, and so they're viewing it as training. So we actually have an amazing arrangement.
Private sector consultant?
Technically, I guess that would be called, but I mean, it's a, basically, I look at the person as like a more of a junior planner that's learning and, but will have, you'll be able to bounce things back off the cog and this Tai Chi group that does planning, um, and they'll do eight hours. So four hours will be here to meet with anybody, go through things, four hours remotely, and then attend, um, board and commission meetings. Candy also agreed that she would try and sit and go to board and commission meetings. Um, Clifton's trying to get everything prepped and done. Um, so, and again, we have the town planner position out. I think it closes at the end of the month. Um, so hopefully we'll get good applicants, any help getting the word out. Um, but it's, in talking to other towns, I mean, there's a serious shortage of planners. Um, so I think this person is gonna be more junior, but we'll have backup and support. Um, Ashley and Adriana, who are in that department, are fantastic. Um, Adriana is gonna be out for a while, so a lot's gonna fall to Ashley. So it is gonna be a tricky time, um, but I think everybody's gonna band together and do what we can. Um, and they, we're gonna have like a meeting with the person we haven't met them yet, um, I think it's on him next week, actually, yeah, it's next week. Um, so that's good. Um, we have a number of other HR things we're working through in terms of posting positions, filling positions, maybe some changes with some union things. We're trying to get a lot done in my last three weeks, but I think they're all really positive changes, so I think those will be really good. Um, and because of all this, it's a lot also on Mary and the admin services, but, um, hopefully we'll be doing interviews soon for the part-time building person, cause they are also, you know, they, they've got a lot on their plate, but I'd say Bob in his new role as building official has been doing a really fantastic job and working so hard and like, has been out sick and still communicating consistently with Stacy. Um, so that's, that's good. Um, I feel like there was one.
I, I wanna say, and, and maybe we weren't gonna cover this, we are so lucky to have Steve Trinkhaus as a part-time engineer helping Chris. He's just so knowledgeable and fabulous, um, and.
Especially on stormwater.
Yeah, especially on stormwater, and, and he'll be right out there, hands on, in the field, and we're just so lucky to have that right now, because for several years, we've looked for another engineer unsuccessfully, um, so.
I'll skip my, that's a really great point, thank you. I'll see my other updates, because you guys are in the room, I do just wanna share. We're excited. So tomorrow, we're doing a press conference, the governor's coming down, um, and it's about, uh, this new kind of apprenticeship program that we have going with Violia, who's the water and sewer operator. Um, they do our sewers here, they do water and sewer for like New London, water for Eastlime, um, but they're a Paris-based company, they're all over the world. Um, and we actually put them in touch with one of your teachers, AJ, um, who teaches like, is it like environmental, clean water?
Conservation.
Conservation, thank you. Um, and he's been like super into this, so we got everybody matched up last year, and Dan from our, um, sewer department really helped spearhead this, um, along with Violia. And, um, it came out as part of the work I was doing with CCM on the one nineteen K commission, um, Seymour High School is one place that did it. Um, so you guys are like, gonna be like the second school in the whole state that's gonna slowly develop our curriculum and then hopefully an apprenticeship kind of internship pipeline with Violia. And I would say, like, it's like after you, you have different levels, like, if you do have a internship apprentice stuff, you can be like level one, and I think within like a year or two, you can be level two, and by then you're making like six figures. Like, it's amazing field. You're, you're also helping to be sure the water is clean, you know, that, you know, we're treating everything properly, you're helping our shellfish, you know, it's a really kind of fascinating field. I think a lot of people don't necessarily think about going into water and sewer management, but it's really amazing, so, um.
Yeah, it's, it's water at the outflow.
Yeah, right, yeah, so you're back to being water. Um, so I'm really excited that this is getting recognized, so we're doing it with New London, Stonington, we're meeting at Grass O Tech, um, but we're gonna highlight the Stonington program, um, so if you guys have an option to take that class or to other students, let them know. I think in the spring, it'll gear up even more, um. I don't know, I feel like there's so much more on, but.
Yeah, if people are interested in environmental, it's a part of environmental, you don't think about, but it's a really important.
It's really important.
Yeah.
And it's fascinating.
Being part of.
If everybody ever wants to go to four of our sewer plants, it's actually pretty fun and interesting, and we could set that up. Um, is there anything big that I'm praying to tell these two about before our last meeting?
Yeah.
So much happening.
I'm blank right now, today's been a day. There is, I'm sure there's a ton.
Yeah. I'd say the biggest thing where I'm working on right now, outside of normal day-to-day stuff, is there is an issue with funding for child and family agency in Parketuck. Um, I'm gonna call it an inadvertent mistake that the state made that got brought to our attention. So we've been working, I've been working really hard with our, you know, state delegation, with, um, kind of the governor's office, anyone who will just respond to my emails or phone calls, um, we're hoping that they'll get a solution on the table, but if not, I might come give you guys an update of a backup plan I have that hopefully would at least keep them from having to close in the next two months. Um, so, cause they, they serve largely Stonington youth and families, um, counseling and everything, but they have like a hundred and sixteen person waitlist. Um, and, uh, yeah, it would be devastating if they had to close, so that's just something else that's been taken a lot of time, but for working on it, um, and I think that's it. Alright, thank you. So you guys should get extra credit points for sticking on this line. We can write on your sheet that you stayed longer.